I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 26, 2016 regular meeting at 6:00 PM for the Laverne Planning Commission. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the November 29, 2016 meeting. A motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Make a motion to accept and submit it.
Make a motion to accept. We have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes have been approved. Our first two items have been deferred. Correct, Mr. Brown? We will be moving on to number three. Number three, site plan, Brand Tire Shop requested by Rogers Group, Inc., Engineering Services, 1,650 square foot proposed automobile repair shop on 3, 0.35 acres, property located at 1501 Piercy Street, tax map 0140, group A, parcel 39, I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Mr. Jose Brand. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that's been on the agenda last month. I think it received a variance, or I believe it was a variance last month also. And in getting that variance, I think they had to relocate or shift the building a little bit, and I think it did a different size. And, but basically, they've got everything submitted. You know, it's the same thing we discussed at the workshop, or that was discussed at the workshop, and all items have been addressed.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, with all the items have been addressed, and I appreciate the applicant working with us on that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
Make a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This plan is approved. Our next item of business, final plattery subdivision of Lot 2 and Lot 3 of the Lanham Park subdivision requested by Forsight, Inc., two proposed lots on 1.36 acres, property located at 5062 and 5068 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 015N, group A, parcel 1 and 2, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Jerry Butler. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this is the plat that will take care of the properties for the next, basically, two site plans. This is an item that was discussed at the workshop, and just like the last one, on this one, all technical items have been addressed.
Questions or comments from the board?
Quick question.
Question, Mr. Coates?
Which one went should have addressed the driveway yesterday? Should we make a... Have it been addressed? Make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our next item of business, site plan, Checkers Restaurant requested by Forsight, Inc., proposed 922 square foot restaurant on 0.72 acres, property located at 5062 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 015N, group A, parcel 1, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Invest Squared. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this will be the tract in this area here for this site plan. This is something that was discussed at the workshop. I think there was a few comments, but the applicant took care of all the comments, and all technical items have been addressed.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
We'll take it along to the address. The chairman make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion passes as well. Our next item, site plan, Taco John's Restaurant requested by Forsight, Inc., proposed 1,883 square foot restaurant on 0.64 acres, property located at 5068 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 015N, group A, parcel 2, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Invest Squared. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this will be this lot on the previous plat that was approved. Just like the last item, it did have a few comments at the workshop that had to be addressed, and applicant did take care of those and resubmitted, and all technical items have been addressed.
Chairman, I have one question for the applicant. If someone's here, just answer one quick question.
Someone here from Invest Squared? If you would, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Don Collins, a civil engineer with Forsight, and our office is in Brentwood, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. My question is, are the TJ sign, is that backlit as well? The, so that the sign here?
Actually, the operator, the, will be working on the sign. They have a different sign vendor that his sole purpose is, is to take care of all the signs that Taco John's and will use on all their properties, so they'll be putting all the permits.
So you don't know if it's backlit or not? You're not, you don't know?
No, I don't, sir.
So on the drawings, are we accepting the signed package as well, then? That's the question.
While he's looking for that, Carl, was that just left on the other, other concerns? Was that, was that just left on there?
I left them on there just to make sure that y'all remembered what the concerns were. Let me look at what this one was.
It's just about the parking, not alone, front?
Yeah, that, it's basically just let you know if they still have parking as shown, but I don't think anybody had any comments or concerns at the workshop. It's just if you do approve it, it's allowing the parking as it is shown.
It's shown in the letter, it's not identifying where it is, but it is showing it on the, on the building itself, both locations.
But they are backlit?
Well, no, it doesn't identify. It just gives you the domain, well, it just shows you where it's at, didn't give you dimensions.
I would say that it's going to be due to the style of the letters and the sign.
And even on this, it will require a signed permit also, so if they're not in compliance, whenever they come in for a signed permit, they'll have to bring it to the Border Zoning Appeals anyways.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our next item of business, preliminary plattery subdivision of Jane Anne Lester subdivision requested by Huddleston Steel, five proposed lots on 2.01 acres, property located at Gamble Lane and Sunrise Drive, tax map 017D, group D, parcel 4.01, R2 medium density residential zoning district, property owned by Jane Anne Lester. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, all technical items have been addressed on this item also.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
So we did shrink down from five lots down to four?
It's got the four lots plus the lot number seven, which is that existing lot, and I think one of the comments at the workshop was, all lots need to at least have 10,000 square feet, and as you can tell on all the lots, it's, I think the smallest one's at 10,292 square feet, I believe.
Very good. Thank you very much for listening to our comments.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept or submit it.
Make a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our next item of business, final plat, Central Park Commercial Subdivision Phase 1 requested by Womble and Associates, two proposed lots on 1.55 acres, property located at the intersection of Floyd Mayfield Drive and Murfreesboro Road, tax map 014, parcel 72, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Richland South LLC. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this is also a plat that was, that we discussed at the workshop. It's actually this front piece of this lot that's highlighted here. It's just this front piece here. There was a few comments at the workshop, and a few things that need to be addressed, but all items have been taken care of, and everything has been addressed.
Any questions or comments from the board?
So the site plan, we got the packet, Carl, with the entranceway showing 40 feet. On the other sheet, it shows 30 feet. Is that just as it was?
Let me see which, what you're looking at.
That's, no, there was a...
Because this is the plat. Are we looking at...
Yeah.
Okay.
Danny, you may want to... Name and address for the record, sir.
Danny Womble, 40 Middleton Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Did you hear Mr. Coates' question?
I did. The driveway on Murfreesboro Road functions as right in, right out. It is 30 foot wide, and it's shown 30 foot on the site plan, and it is shown that way on the access easement that's on the plat. The driveway on Floyd Mayfield Drive is shown 36 foot wide on the site plan, and what you're seeing on the plat is a 24 foot wide cross-access easement. I left the access easement the same width as the driveway, which is 24 foot wide, and its purpose is to allow both lots to cross each lot in a cross-access so that they can use both driveways. But I do have on the engineering drawings a 36 foot wide drive on Floyd Mayfield.
That work?
Yep, that works, yep.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions or comments regarding this project? Hold on. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept or submit it.
Make a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item of business will be site plan, Central Park Commercial Center, Phase 1 requested by Womble and Associates, proposed Dunkin' Donuts Restaurant on 0.77 acres, property located at Floyd Mayfield Drive and Murfreesboro Road, tax map 014, parcel 72, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Richland South LLC. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, all technical items have been addressed.
Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion on this? No questions?
There's one question on sheet A5-1. See that, that's showing the coffee cup with the two squirrels in it? Is that, is that a signage, or is that just, how is that, sheet A5-1, this one here?
I don't know what that is. The architectural portion of this metal was prepared by the architects, and they submitted it to my office, and a runner brought it here. I actually haven't seen it. The developer is here, he may know, I'm not sure, you know, what that is.
It's just, if it is technically a signage, I'm sure by that's, dimensions would be bigger than what's, you know, can be approved, if that's classed as a signage.
If that's signage, then we'll have to comply with the signage regulations when they apply for a signed permit.
Just, I mean, I'm looking at this, just, yeah, sure. But as far as the plat, what they proposed was fine, if you can come back in signage, staff get a little bit, make sure meets requirements, I'm happy with the actual engineering drawings.
Okay. Do we need to make it part of the motion?
Well, no, because it, the, we're approving the building, this would be a different, the signs would come back in to staff for approval, so it's, you know, some of them to take note of, but it doesn't affect the physical, the plat that we're approving.
Very good. Any other questions or comments regarding this project? We'll entertain a motion.
Now make a motion to accept or submit it.
Make a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Our next item of business, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman rezoning of property requested by Womble and Associates, 2.0 acres, property located at 466 Stones River Road, tax map 014, parcel 5.01, current zoning district R1, low density residential zoning district, proposed zoning district R3, high density residential zoning district, property owned by Joseph Pardue. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, did we skip number 10 or miles?
I think, yeah. I'm sorry. My apologies. Let's go back to number 10. Site plan, Central Park Commercial Center, Phase 1, request by Womble and Associates, 5,670 square feet, proposed retail strip center on 0.85 acres, property located Floyd Mayfield Drive and Murfreesboro Road, tax map 014, parcel 72, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Richland South, Inc., per LLC. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this, this item is this portion of the plat or site plan for that lot. All technical items have been addressed.
Just look, just so that, before I understand, that drawing appears to be from the workshop, didn't show the angled parking that we discussed.
Yeah, I didn't have an updated drawing. This is just, it's basically this lot in the drawing is what's in front of you here.
The drawing we do have did show the angled parking. What we're looking at was from the workshop.
Yeah, if you go to sheet C2 on the plans, it would pass that, it does have the angled parking and stuff.
It does.
Because the building even looks a little different. Like I said, I didn't, I didn't have a updated plan, or Kristen may have it, I didn't have it though.
So all technical items have been addressed, and our comments have been addressed. Make a motion to accept or submit it.
Make a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll go on to number 11, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman rezoning of property requested by Womble and Associates, 2.0 acres, property located at 466 Stones River Road, tax map 014, parcel 5.01, current zoning district R1, low density residential zoning district, proposed zoning district R3, high density residential zoning district, property owned by Joseph Pardue. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that was discussed quite a bit at the workshop. All technical items have been addressed. I know there's concerns or some discussion at the workshop, and, you know, it's kind of up to this board as far as, you know, favorable or unfavorable recommendations to the rezoning.
On this, the first one, which is, if you remember rightly, we had an application that wasn't signed. Did that get resolved?
She, I talked to Kristen today. She, she has it, but it did get signed. The owner came, yes, it did get signed. That was the one thing that, that was lacking on that item.
Do you have some questions for the applicant? I believe Mr. Womble is here to answer some questions for us, I believe.
Well, I'm hoping you'd step up to the podium, please, sir.
Danny Womble, 40 Middleton Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
Previously, we've had some, we've done approval for some R2, correct?
Correct.
The intent for the R3, what is the plan for it? I mean, you know, just to give an idea of what the plan is there as far as development or only goes.
What, what the plan is, is they, on the scattered single-family lots that Amnon Schreitman has, he's been building houses over the last several months, and based on the increase in the cost of building and developing lots, he knows that his single-family houses are going to be over $200,000. And a lot of the workforce-type housing needs to be at a lower level to meet the needs for housing in the community. So his plan for this is to, if, if it's approved for R3 zoning, is to build townhome-type housing to be sold to end-users to meet that workforce housing need, to be able to build and sell a house for less than $200,000 to people that can't qualify and can't afford the $250,000 house, or whatever the price is above $200,000 on these single-family lots.
And there's a stream run through there?
There is a stream, kind of on the northeast corner of the property. The stream runs from David's Way across the corner of the property.
The planned access points for the property, as far as accessing onto East Schreitman or Stones River Road, what's the plan or thought there?
Well, for the two-acre tract, it's only road frontage presently as Stones River Road. The larger tract, the 24.59 acre tract, has road frontage on Stones River Road as well as East near Schreitman Boulevard. When East near Schreitman Boulevard was built, Amnon gave the easement for the property to cross, for the road to cross his property, and at that point, three turnouts were constructed for future access points. So for the larger tract, the intent is to use those for access if it's rezoned, and not, not access Stones River Road, or not use a driveway for Stones River Road. Of course, all this would be worked out during, during design, and then, of course, would fall under the requirements of this planning commission. The two-acre tract, if it's rezoned, I would suspect its, its future development, when it's developed, would have to be coordinated with the larger tract, and would depend on internal access from the larger track. And again, that, that would have to come back with design drawings and meet the approval of this planning commission at that time. Right now, the, Mr. Pardue lives there, it's his home. I don't think he intends to develop immediately. The larger track, if it's rezoned and developed, it can be designed in a way that it stubs connections, or internal connections in the future, when the two-acre track does develop. And at that point, then, if it develops after the fact, it would require approval of this planning commission. At that point, the planning commission could require it to use the internal access rather than the Stones River Road.
Is there a question, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion to send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Well, it's going to be an interesting discussion point, and I think what we need to do is move it forward from this board, move it on to the Mayor Alderman, let them also make the decision. So with that, I'm going to send an unfavorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman.
I have a motion for an unfavorable recommendation. Do I have a second? I will second it.
Graham, if I could interject, just so that the BOMA has an idea of the reasons why, so that up, when they're up there, they can consider any minutes that have been from this board.
I think with that junction, with the minute that ran about, it's a very complex junction, and putting the additional homes on there is problematic without very good design of roads on and off, near Schreitman and/or, and/or Stones River Road.
We have a motion to send an unfavorable recommendation. Do we have a second? I have a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. King?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
So we'll entertain another motion.
Just so everybody understands, just so we're all on the same page, that motion to send an unfavorable recommendation did not pass, and so there would need to be another motion before the board now, or other discussion.
I'd like to open the floor up to discussion. I have to agree with Graham, and that, that's a very condensed corner, and putting that many homes, or approving it for that many homes, could be very problematic. I respect everyone's decision, but personally, I just feel that will be causing the city a great amount of problem, capacity-wise, on our sewage and traffic, with the number of schools and amount of people that go through that intersection in a day's time. Adding this many more homes would be problematic, and that's just my personal opinion. Any other comments?
Well, I feel like, I can see his situation, I can see yours too, but also, I've got a look, and some people can't afford these $200,000 homes, and we do have a, we're getting a Laverne's getting, where that type of homes are getting all over, and I feel like this will give people the opportunity to, you know, to go ahead and, and I know with other things going to be worked out, which will probably come back this board later on, but right now, I feel like, I feel like responsible of saying that I think a favorable recommendation should be sent to Mayor and Alderman's board, and let them decide what they want to do. So I'll put that in a formal motion.
Put it in a formal motion of a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
If you, if you could, Chairman, just do a roll call.
Roll call again?
Yes.
We'll do a roll call vote one more time. Mr. King?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I will vote no.
No.
No for Mr. Coates. We will be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with a vote of 3 for, 2 against. And please just pass on our comments. Thank you very much. Our next item of business, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman rezoning of property requested by Womble and Associates, 24.5 acres, property located on the eastern side of East near Schreitman Boulevard, tax map 014, parcel 5, 5.02, 14.03, and 14.04, current zoning district R1, low density residential zoning district, proposed zoning district R3, high density residential zoning district, property owned by Amnon Schreitman. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, this is the 24 and a half acres that surrounds the two-acre tract that was just discussed previously, and all technical items have been addressed from the, from the workshop.
Very good. Any questions or comments on this item? I'm sure they're going to reflect the previous items, since it is all one and parcel, so we'll move on to a motion to send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
Make a motion to send a favorable recommendation.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Once again, we're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. King?
Yes.
Yes.
No, and?
No.
And no. So once again, we will be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with a 3 for, 2 against vote, and I'm sure everyone's okay if our comments reflect the previous item for Board of Mayor and Alderman, and that moves... previous item to Board of Mayor and Alderman, and that moves us on to number 13, bonds and letters of credit.
Mr. Chairman, everyone should have a bond list in front of them. Everything is up to date, I think the very first one that'll expire that's coming up is, looks like March, and then, of course, a couple in April, so, they'll get those updated as they come around.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments from anyone? Well, I would like to thank all the board members, staff, attorney's office, and, you know, everyone that participates in planning for their diligent and hard work this year. Very proud of the way the city is looking and the direction we're going, and I'd like to thank everyone sincerely. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.